...with liberty and justice for all.
Page June 3rd, 2013, time seven p.m. and ready to be in the common council's order. This time the president himself, from his favors made, had elected classes besides us, please.
What?
Here.
What?
Here.
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 Jamie, here.
Have you received the minutes from the May 6th for the special meeting? So I don't think any of it came through time to be fulfilled. So, have you seen any changes or changes in the...
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
In the view of the minutes, I did note that the... There was some greater specificity would be helpful in the... What changes were actually made at the May 6th meeting? So I prepared, put in front of each one of the council members and yourself, a more specific breakdown of that. All of those changes were intended to be made at the May 6th meeting. There is one change that was not brought to my attention until after the May 6th meeting, as what I referenced and changed prior to the May 14th meeting. But I did want to make sure that everyone was aware and it was clear. There were no changes to the sign orders made at the May 14th meeting.
I would be interested, the minutes have to be amended to include the...
Just...
For the May 6th. Yeah, because what's here is incomplete.
And then how about the special? Just so, is that okay with the special meeting, the 1.75? Chris has it on.
Actually, yeah. I think it could actually probably more applicable to be put under the...
May 6th.
Under the May 6th, because it was intended to be made at May 6th.
It was made then.
Yeah.
Didn't get reported in your notes, but it was made at the meeting.
We made the changes on the chart?
Yes.
Okay. Because that was the page 24, changes on the chart.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So many of them...
What happened here is that... Chris just mentioned that that was caught and he further clarified the draft that he had set up. Not the draft, but the changes that he made.
I didn't get a lot of the changes on the draft, so I didn't know if that was... I'm starting to feel like what was on the audio.
Right.
So the May 14th is okay as is?
I have a question. On that one, on the day. The first word in the business there about the contract for the scope of services contract. Was it, is it limited or was it limited to capital improvement plan only?
The capital improvement plan is to, is the 19,000. Do you see 19,000 develop a capital improvement plan for the city? That's the only thing that was actually made a motion to cap. The scope of service is going to be based on what we, what you and/or any other board member may want to have that look at. So it's not limited to budget, if that's what you're asking. But they asked, I think Jamie made the motion to cap.
Yeah, they capped the total contract at 19,000. But the way it reads, it looks like the contract is only for the capital improvement. And my question is, does the contract include more than that?
We want to do the three year.
Yeah, so that's what the contract includes, right?
The motion was only to approve the financing, not to exceed 19,000.
True.
To develop a capital improvement, but we can spend what's appropriated for other items other than capital improvement.
And what's worth expenditures for the last three years, what originally was, same for the future, next three years.
My understanding was the total contract was not to exceed that.
Right. Now, I guess that's what I understood, too.
Yeah, that's what I understood.
That's not what's in motion, it's not what's on the audio.
I guess that's...
That's not what I understood when we were discussing, whether it's on the audio or not. My discussion was, I thought...
Well, having to change everything else, that's not part of the motion. Unless it...
Yeah. I don't, I haven't reviewed the audio or any other source, but my notes indicate that the motion was to, for a contract for the purposes outlined by the reading for an answer, not to exceed 19,000. Jamie motioned, two minutes, Terry said.
Well, we can, I mean, if that's... If you think you want to change the minutes to strike out to develop a capital improvement plan, that was the intent of the, that was the quote for that section of the scope of services. So they, I think Jamie made the motion based on, he didn't want to go over that, but I...
Right, well, we were discussing everything at that point in time.
But each scope of service had a separate quote or a dollar amount that they were quoting what it would cost to provide. You know, like, lodging services are a different amount than the capital. Because the capital improvement plan can go on, it's going to probably go on for a while. I mean, it just isn't developed stages where the budget stuff, we're going to start right now. We're starting it tonight with the potential of trying to get our key cap rate raised. So, I mean, they're going to look at this on that, and they're here to talk about that. So, we, it's up to you, the two minutes, if you want to strike the...
I think we should strike it. It was my understanding, the entire project, not just...
So, has someone moved to, in the May 14th, 2013 meeting minutes, to strike the phrase to develop a capital improvement plan for the city of Greensburg?
I'll make the motion if I make a minute.
This is for the May 6th, the May 14th meeting, correct?
Yes, the special meeting.
So we have a motion for the May 6th regular meeting, as amended with the information given from our attorney. And the May 14th meeting with the changes made. Any further discussion? Second to that.
Okay.
Make motion.
Jamie, here.
All those, favor say aye?
Aye.
Both same side?
Aye, was not that meeting, I abstain.
And both meetings are just the one meeting?
Aye, was not the special meeting on the 14th.
All business.
We need to... We did, do we approve amending the minutes? So do we have to approve them now, or the...
Okay, that's just on making changes.
Yeah, so I'll make the motion, we approve the minutes as amended.
Same. Any further discussion? All those, favor say aye?
Aye.
Both same side? Close passes, minutes are approved. All business, sign works discussion. I am aware of it, not sign it. And I have my reasons, I can think the council fully understands the state of the May 14th meeting, the actual height that it would be, and the size of signs. Hospital's about 30 foot tall, what 48 foot would be, it would be clear area. Example, on Michigan Avenue coming in, it'd be a larger sign than what the old meeting is on our stage in the gym. It's going to save the two square feet. It turns into five square feet in Michigan Avenue. And I've been told that if I don't like it, I need to make a recommendation. I did stop on 150 North yesterday and found a person outside, very open, pro-growth person. He lives right there. He has signage, and he wants to see the city grow, but he might want to have a... I would have signed if I was house across the road. I was concerned of his, value, value of property. I'm taking a chance on that, so... I thought something a little smaller, shorter, a little more aligned. I would think that the maximum size of sign should not exceed 225 square feet, which is 25 square feet larger than what we currently have. Not to exceed 40 feet in the area areas. The rest of it, you know, I think that I'd be okay with it. That's just my recommendations. Appreciate you listening.
Okay, so we understand that, you know, that's the part of the ordinance that you are asking that we reconsider, that we modify as the size.
Right now, the current size, largest size sign is 200 square feet. Whether per side, whatever, 200 square feet per side. And I'm asking to add that in large to, not to exceed 225 square feet. And not to exceed 40 feet in height, except along the interstate, there are changes, does that make sure which, you know, the larger signs and heights, except, you know, what we have to offer or say.
I'd be interested to hear what the rest of the council has to say. I guess councillor, you could explain what protocol is here. I don't believe we've ever crossed this bridge before, as far as having or may or not sign an ordinance that's been passed.
Certainly. By Indian statute, the executive officer has 10 days following the passage of an ordinance or resolution by the legislative body to either sign or veto that particular ordinance. And in vetoing, he is instructed to give whatever information or additional insights he may think is necessary for the legislative body to determine how best to act regarding that veto. By statute, if he has not acted within 10 days following the passage of an ordinance, then that bill, that ordinance is deemed to be vetoed. So as the ordinance stands currently, it has been vetoed by the effective passage of... The options following a veto are either to allow the veto to stand, in which case the ordinance would be defeated, and the ordinance that existed prior to this body's passage following the third reading would be in effect. Otherwise, the other option is to allow for this body to override that veto by a majority, two-thirds vote, occurring at the first regular or special meeting following the veto. In this instance, the veto was effective following passage of time on May, 10 days after May 6th, so May 16th. This is the first scheduled, or the first regular meeting or special meeting held since that time. So this is the meeting at which, if you wish to override the veto, now is your time to do it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have as legal aspects of where you sit right now.
I guess my... I don't know that I had an issue with the way the ordinance was written, but I also don't feel like your requests are unreasonable. I think they're, I understand, I don't think they're, in my opinion, I don't have an issue with what you're asking to change in the ordinance either. So, I guess I would be of the opinion that we could go back and change the ordinance, and then we would have to re-admit it as a new for this.
In order to change it? Yeah, basically, your options are to amend, if your consideration is to amend, your options are twofold at this point. You can either allow the veto to stand, in which case you would then be proposing the entire ordinance again with the amendments that you suggest in it. And then that would have to then go through the same three-reading process that the council normally uses. The other option would be to override the veto, allowing the entire ordinance as currently written to take effect, and then seek an amendment of the specific provisions within the appendix that are causing... That amendment of the ordinance would also have to go through the same amended process of three readings. So the difference is basically what ordinance is in effect until that amendment takes effect.
If I understood you right, we can let it be, if current ordinance stands, we can override veto and have this ordinance be in effect. We can override veto and come back and amend it later. We can, if we let it stand now, we can, it's over with, we can start over again with what we've got, with amendment or whatever, but in either case, either that one or veto, override the veto, and then later subsequently amending it, we've got to go through several steps. Normal steps.
Yes.
The only thing that was concerning me about vetoing, why veto, is if you want to go back and look at it again, or possibly makes a dependence to it, that if the sign is sold between now and then, will we bound to have that one, two, or three signs available for the height of its specifications? Put me in there.
Can I say something? I don't have a problem either way. Really think, you're talking about veterans' way when you're talking about...
I'm talking about all these groups and other areas as well.
Okay, but I'm talking about the property owners who step mostly along veterans' way there.
They're talking, you know, there are the Tricia Estates out there, the Barton Complex, you had the people live on 150 North. I counted yesterday, between 150 North and 15th Street, there's 50 residences in that area that would be affected.
I wouldn't really have a problem with the change, it sounds okay to me.
Which way?
Your way.
It don't mean my way, but what I'd like the council to is take a look at. You know, I'm open to this, but I think our height and our size is probably a little bit large.
I guess my question is, before we voted the third time, we were all asked, do you understand the ordinance? Every one of us said, yes, we understand. And then we passed this ordinance at five to nothing. Now, in reflecting back, I'm wondering, did we understand it? I think I did, and I'm not putting anyone on the spot, but I'm not sure. I'm just interested in what you all have to say about that, what you all think. We passed this five to nothing. Do we start over?
Gentlemen, you started out, the complaints you did in the committees, since they won, it was clarified, language clarified, it had declared. When you were doing that, then this was thrown in the mix, different heights and sizes, this, that, and the other. But, you know, I couldn't, what struck out to me was coming in Michigan Avenue, North Michigan Avenue, and the possibility of being a 275 square foot sign, which is larger than the old meeting or auditorium on the stage, and about 50 feet in the area, which is as high as what the 304 on the hospital was. I didn't envision that for what's coming in on Lincoln Street. And who knows what speed limit is going to be on veterans' way? It could be the same thing if there's a 40, 45 on our speed limit now. This 40, 45 is 250 square feet, Jim, this 30, 35 is 150 square feet. That was my concern. I think the language has been clarified to what it originally was.
Well, you know, I don't care if we start over again, it's fine. We can start over.
But I don't think that's true.
Either here or there, we can jettison the whole, the whole charge deal, you know, that's, that's fine. That's what we all think's the best. I'm, I'll do anything I can to help, to provide for that. I have two concerns. One, you keep saying that it's, Lincoln Street's going to be 225 foot sign.
No.
Square foot sign.
No, I didn't say that.
What did you say?
I said, North Michigan Avenue.
North Michigan Avenue. Forty-five mile North Street. Okay, out there on, or on...
Or even where State Bank in that area through there, 45 mile North Street.
That's possible. My other concern is that I think we could have, and I think we would have, resolve all this had it been brought to our attention in a specific manner, because I tried to provide for the areas I thought were of concern. The multi-sign, numbers, panels, and then the heights. And we tried to reduce those, not the council gave. Had I known that you had a maximum, or that there was some area in which you were willing to be flexible about, beginning right in February, when it was first, we told the guys in May of this year, that was 90 days, roughly, three months. We would have found a way to accommodate all that. We would have made sure that those, we would have found some ways to try and provide for that. So the areas that I thought you had concerns with, we addressed, we scrubbed the one, we reduced the other sites. I wasn't aware of that, the wall sign sizes, I was aware of that. We reduced those to what we thought were within acceptable limits. Now we've got another situation and added on the fact that the heights are too high. Again, had we had those kinds of, had information well before we passed it, I think we would have found, you would have found something that you could sign. So I'm disappointed about that. And at this point in time, you know, I, whatever the other council members want to do with it, I have no... I have no ownership in this in the sense that, you know, it's got to be this way, it's perfect. I'm not so cast of that. So, whatever council member tells me, I'm happy to be supportive of trying to find common ground here to, so we can put our signs on.
For the record, gentlemen, I'd like to remind you, February 8th, you received concerns. February 6th, you received concerns. A third, myself, received my concerns. So what's my, what's given to you?
Now, I said, I tried to address those that you had pointed out. I thought I had. All I'm saying is, had you talked in specifics, I probably could have found ways to try, maybe I just, maybe I'm dense. And if that's the case, then I accept that, that I misread it, and I apologize. It's done, you know, and we're spending an awful lot of time on something that I think could have been more expeditiously handled.
When the council gets done speaking here, we have an audience that wants to speak.
Sorry, just scratching at them.
Counselor.
Do you have an opinion, Congressman? I think that they're reasonable recommendations. Again, I think it might have been able to handle on the basics, but it wasn't, and it's here and out in front of us. So I think, if the council's willing to make the exception, I'd probably find it the exception as well.
I guess, I'd like to start and say, I think a lot of the changes to the sign ordinance were great. I, I think a lot of the work, and you put a lot of work into that, and I appreciate what you did. Because it's amazing, it's a lot better than what it was. And it's going to spell things out, it's going to clear things up for everybody when they're looking to put a sign in. I think there's a lot of great things that were in that ordinance. I don't think the mayor's requests are unreasonable. I don't think we're at ground zero, starting over. I think we take the ordinance that we passed, we can add these changes to it and reintroduce it. And I don't think you're going to have any legal five zero vote. I would think that...
I think you accomplished what was set out to do, clarify the language. And increasing heights or size of signs, no, that's a fine as well. See, the one to start out, like, you're, Jamie, the vision started out to do, clarify language, and that accomplished. Hopefully, it's a great approval.
It is.
The committee members said, I just say it's not. Well, and so I feel like I'm disappointed, I'm going to give up.
It sounds to me like it's a moot point.
You all, please have a good discussion before we, there's much more to be done.
Well, unless there's a motion to override the veto, it's moot point. Take some testimony, that's fine, it's your problem. Unless somebody wants to either amend it, and basically it has to be, it's either vetoed, it's either accepted, or it's overturned, like, that's really about the only two choices we have.
Do we have to vote?
You don't have to vote on this one, do you?
But, yeah. The only thing you have to do tonight is if you want to override the veto, you must do that tonight. Because that, by statute, has to be done in the first regular meeting, first regular or special meeting following the veto. So if that's your inclination, that has to be done tonight. Now, what I will say could be equally done tonight is any one of your council member could propose an amendment to the ordinance after it has been deemed effective, which, after you, if you vote to override it, as soon as that vote is done, it's deemed effective. And then it can be amended. And you can, you can move to do that. And statutorily, the only thing you cannot do is you cannot, you cannot pass for two readings on the same night. So basically, an ordinance cannot be passed on the same night that it is presented unless there is a two-thirds majority vote following a unanimous decision to suspend the rules. So that's the only thing you could, you could do. So if, if the compromise that the council is seeking is to simply amend the ordinance as it is, you know, to include the things that the mayor has raised, then your option to do that is either to let the veto stand, and then the next time this ordinance is proposed, you know, make those changes and then propose it again for readings, or override it, let this ordinance take effect, and then move to amend the appendix.
Yeah, misunderstood, so if we overturn the veto and then we unanimously vote it, this is when the rules will be amended tonight?
First. First, yes. Well, and you could, you could, procedurally, the way that would happen is, you would move to override the veto. After that has been done, you would move to amend the appendix, propose a, a first reading amendment to the ordinance. And they would have first reading vote, followed by, if you so choose, chose, you could then suspend the rules and have, uh, second reading, if you have a two third majority on the amendment. Well, technically, by Indiana statute, you can do, Indiana statute only requires two readings. This body has always done three readings in the past.
But it's not necessary.
But it's not necessary.
But we could pass all three tonight, but you first.
You could do the same thing on the third that you did on the second.
So we, we could actually do it all tonight?
Yeah, you could, that's, that is the procedural mechanism that you have to use.